All right, good morning. Today is Tuesday, August 12th. For the Elyria Planning Commission here this morning. Roll call, Mr. Aiden, Mr. Battle, Mr. Hubbard, Ms. Rivera, Mr. Pionowski, Mayor Brubaker here, Mr. Tedrow. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as distributed from July 8, 2025. Moved by Mr. Director Pionowski. Seconded by Ms. Rivera. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Item number four, miscellaneous correspondence, we have none. Item number five, new business, none. Item number six, old business, none. And we have several public hearings here this morning. The first one on the docket is 2025-100081. K. Hovanian Homes, 3296 Columbia Road, Richfield, Ohio, 44286. Request for a final plat for Harvest Meadows subdivision phase number four. Mr. Craig, do we want to go to proponents or we want to go to staff reports?
We'd go to staff reports first.
Let's do that first. All right, Mr. Shonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, the request for 2025-100081 is for final approval, or rather, a approval of a final plat for the Harvest Meadows subdivision phase four. The property is currently zoned residential planned unit development. Applicant is requesting a total of 44 lots and a total of 18.51 acres. The comments from city departments are as follows. The city engineer provided correspondence indicating a utility easement on Cedarwood Trail be extended to the far west property line towards the United Polish Club of Elyria property. Parcel number 100007101017 through block F and G indicated on the site plan provided in your application. Recommendation from staff is approval of the final plat with the condition of the extension of the utility easement provided per the comment from the engineering department. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shonin. Engineer Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Shonin said, the only comment I had was to extend the utility easements to the adjoining property owner. This way we have connectivity for future, if the Polish Club property ever were to develop, there would be easements already in place along there. So that was my only comment.
Great, thank you, Mr. Engineer Schneider. Assistant Chief Gall.
Fire Department has no, the plat approval, no objections, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the committee? Director Pionowski, or Engineer Schneider, through you, Chairman. The utility easement extension that you referenced, does that need to be done? Is that incorporated here? Is that an additional step that we'll do after today's meeting? Or is that, what are we talking about?
Currently, on the plat, it stops at sub lot 205 and 206 along their property lines. It doesn't extend. I would, yes, I would like to have that extended. That would be my recommendation because in the future, if that property to the west were to be developed, they would have, somebody would have to come back for additional easements for that if those utilities are extended through there in any shape, way, or in any way. They can be connected over. So it just basically good housekeeping to keep it. Connectivity is really what it's about. So I would like to have it done, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, are there any proponents? Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ismael Jolik. My address is 2556 East Broad Street, Beck's Lee, Ohio. With K. Hovanian Homes. We have no issue with extending the easement. The surveyor is out on vacation this week, but we'll revise the plat and extend the easement to the adjacent property owner.
Okay, great. Does that satisfy you, Mr. Schneider? Okay. Any questions for the proponent? Okay, thank you. Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve 2025-100081. K. Hovanian Homes, 3296 Columbia Road, Richfield, Ohio, 44286. Request for the final plat for the Harvest Meadows subdivision phase four, including the extension of the sewer as directed by Engineer Schneider. Do I have a motion? Move. Moved by Mr. Tedrow. Seconded by Mr. Battle. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The second item on the agenda is 2025-100082. K. Hovanian Homes, 3296 Columbia Road, Richfield, Ohio, 44286. Request for a sanitary easement for the Harvest Meadows subdivision. Mr. Shonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, PC case number 2025-100082. As indicated, is for sanitary easement along the western side of Indian Hollow Road. This is associated with the Harvest Meadows subdivision. This is near existing portions of the Harvest Meadows subdivision. The comments were routed to multiple city departments. The city engineer indicated that sewers were built to city standards. No further comments, or rather, sewers are to be built to city standards, and he had no further comments. Recommendation of approval of the sanitary easement. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Shonin. Engineer Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So spend some time, this sewer has actually already been installed. It connects from Harvest Meadows subdivision over to Riverfield Reserve, where they're currently constructing over there. As Mr. Shonin said, the sewer was built to our standards and everything was tested, so we have no objection and recommend approval.
Great, thank you. And Assistant Chief Gall.
Fire Department has no comment.
Any questions from the committee? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Public hearing 2025-100082. K. Hovanian Homes, 3296 Columbia Road, Richfield, Ohio, 44286. And the request for a sanitary easement for the Harvest Meadows subdivision. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Battle. Seconded by Director Pionowski. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda, we are going to actually jump down to, all three of these are tied to the same address, but we're going to jump down to public hearing case 2025-10085. Mussey Ave LLC, 7716 Depot Road, Lisbon, Ohio, 44432. For 525 Mussey Avenue, Elyria, Ohio. Request for a rezone from HI Heavy Industrial to SI Special Industrial. Mr. Shonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, for case number 2025-100085. The applicant is indicating a request to rezone the property from heavy industrial uses to special industrial. The parcels are currently heavy industrial as indicated, and the intent is to develop the properties into a business hub that will include a recycling operation as indicated in the most recent application from the applicant. The site, as indicated, is currently zoned heavy industrial, requirements of which can be found in chapter 1166. It is the purpose of the Special Industrial District, found in chapter 1168, is to accommodate a broad range of industrial uses. With the request that was given to our department, it was found to be a best fit to rezone this property to Special Industrial. As indicated, the request was submitted to various city departments. The city engineer had no comments at this time. The fire marshal did not either, but the wastewater department did indicate several recommendations to the board. As indicated on page three of your report provided, I will go along with these recommendations as well as staff from the wastewater department is present. But from the wastewater department, they provided a, the proposed operation will require oversight by city staff, particularly regarding the implementation of stormwater management practices and the maintenance of updated onsite chemical records. An EPA stormwater permit must be obtained. Stormwater pollution prevention plan must be developed and maintained onsite. Facility must maintain compliance with all applicable requirements of the Ohio Administrative Code, chapters 3745-400 and 3745-555. Dust control measures must be implemented in accordance with OAC 3745-17-08. Additional regulatory considerations per the Ohio Administrative Code are indicated as well in the staff report. And as I indicated, Shane Dericott with the wastewater department is present. The findings regarding the rezoning for this case, previously, this was submitted to Planning Commission on January 7th through case number 2025-1000183, and was tabled by Planning Commission. The applicant has since revised the application to clarify some of the uses on the property as indicated by the site plan and building uses in appendix C of your report. It has been determined that the proposed use is best fit with the Special Industrial District, and therefore, a rezoning is required for the site. The site is bounded to the west, rather, to the south, north, and west by properties that have a zoning designation of heavy industrial. And to the east of the subject property, there are properties with the residential two household designation. Despite the close proximity of residential uses, the western branch of the Black River provides a natural boundary and separation between the proposed uses and the residential properties. Due to the nature of the surrounding zoning of the site and the natural boundary provided by the Black River, the proposed SI zoning district does act as a transitional zoning district in a predominantly industrial area of the city of Elyria. It should be of note that multiple variances are needed for this site due to several buildings being located in the front yard. The applicant has provided a request for a variance. All variances are indicated in the report. So overall, the recommendation, after receiving the information and considering the above listed items, staff does recommend that the rezoning request be approved for the property. Further information will be provided to all of you with the next two case numbers regarding the conditional uses section of this request. They do go hand in hand. But like I said, there are multiple appendices within this report indicating the current situation of the zoning as well as the site plan provided by the applicant. And I'm available for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shonin. Mr. Dericott, you come forward and briefly update us on your thoughts on this, please. Please state your name and address.
Shane Dericott, 1194 Golf Road. Yeah, after reviewing, again, there's a lot of history on this property. The current submittal, as far as from a wastewater perspective, I would encourage to proceed, but we will use caution. We'll have to have city staff and things inspect the area. With the residents being to the west, to the east, there's possible dust and debris and nasty smells. So I just wanted to put that in there to leave it up to you to make that decision. I've personally been to one of their facilities in Ohio and also to Pennsylvania, and I don't really remember there being residents as close to this here in Elyria. But if you have any other questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Dericott. Engineer Schneider.
Engineering has no comments.
Assistant Chief Gall.
Fire Prevention Bureau has no objection to the fire, the rezone proposal.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Questions from the committee? Director?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Shonin. I know we've got two, a couple of different cases here, so I don't want to move too far along without asking my question. We previously had an application from this property owner for a similar project. Part of the issue that existed at that time was we felt like we had, we needed more information as to what they were going to use the property for, how they were going to use it, some other assurances. Are we satisfied at this point that those questions have been answered? Do we, we're comfortable moving along?
Yeah, through, through the chair, to Director Pionowski, that is correct. We have provided, we have been provided with further clarification from the applicant as to the uses of the property. The site plan that was provided to all of you in appendix, my apologies, appendix C, I believe it is, on page eight of your report, does provide a breakdown of where these processes and uses will take place. Like I said, further information will be provided in the conditional use section of the report with conditions as well as to restricting the uses of the property to what was provided to our department. But as indicated, the information they provided us was much more in depth than that was previously provided in January. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? At this time, are there any proponents? A proponent, please forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Kenny Oswald, 237 Pepperdine Drive. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak, and my apologies, I'm on yard duty today, so sorry about that. So yes, this has come up before, and I think one of the questions that they were asking at that time was the EPA thing, in that it boundaries the Black River, and a few of the neighbors weren't so happy. I would like to see something done. It seems like this is a good fit for over in that area. I would just lead to caution. Does there have a follow-up plan with EPA? And do they get regular checks, like yearly, to make sure that what they are supposed to be doing, they're doing? So I guess that's my question. And caution, just like you had mentioned also, is there something, you know, a game plan for, on down the road? So thank you. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Oswald here in a second, probably here very shortly. A proponent from the business owner will be speaking, and she can answer that. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Anissa Neder. I'm the architect and also the owner's representative for the 525 Mussey project. I can assure you that EPA approval was sought and approved. Regulatory inspections and regulations will occur at the site, probably more so than, you know, a normal site would be. For example, when we typically do what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which the chair mentioned as a requirement as part of the stormwater and sanitary district, that will happen. However, this is one step over and above that. So that EPA approval will contain this. This is very heavily regulated for the Ohio EPA as part of the recycling practices of this site. I can say that, yes, it is adjacent to residential properties. However, with the buffer with the Black River, along with the railroad tracks and the heavily dense landscaping, we don't anticipate any neighborhood disturbances. We feel that this is a good site, a good fit. There is definitely a reason that the owner of this property has pursued this as long as he has because he does feel that this is a great location for this use group. It's not a public nuisance. If anything, we hope that it will spur further economic development for the industrial sector of the city of Elyria. In speaking with him, I understand that there's only, you know, a dozen or so of these sites in the entire state of Ohio. So as you can imagine, with labor force, trucking, et cetera, bringing that type of labor force into the city of Elyria will just further develop the city as a whole. Putting between 15 and 20 new employees in the city just on this site, cleaning it up as just in general, the site is overgrown. So just putting the site back to good use, obviously under regulatory Ohio EPA regulations.
Thank you. Are there any opponent, or proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve 2025-100085. Mussey Ave LLC, 7716 Depot Road, Lisbon, Ohio, 44432. For 525 Mussey Avenue, Elyria, Ohio. And the request for a rezone from HI Heavy Industrial to SI Special Industrial. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Rivera. Seconded by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is public hearing case 2025-100083. Mussey Ave LLC, 7716 Depot Road, Lisbon, Ohio, 44432. For 525 Mussey Avenue, Elyria, Ohio. And the request for a conditional use for hazardous materials, hazardous storage is found in section 1168.02N. Mr. Shonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. The staff report that I am to provide here will be for both case numbers 100083 and 84. This will be a combination of both conditional uses that were proposed by the applicant. As previously indicated in the last report, there was a, there is a request to rezone the property from HI to SI zoning. For a point of clarification with the board, or the commission, rather, any use within the Special Industrial District is only conditionally permitted. There are no principally permitted uses within the Special Industrial District. So if the applicant at a later time, conceptually, wishes to add more uses to this property, they would need to go through this commission to get approval. But singular, or rather, the two uses that the applicant has proposed are hazardous manufacturing and hazardous materials section, per section 1168.02 of the Special Industrial Zoning District, as well as the junkyard use per section 1168.02 as well. As you can see in your proposed zoning, it's going over to SI, and there are a multitude of conditionally permitted uses. We are singularly looking at only N and O of that list that can be found on page one and two of your report. So I just want to make sure everyone is clear on that. Moving forward here with city department comments, the status quo from the wastewater department was provided as well for this report regarding their concerns that were previously mentioned. And also, as previously mentioned, this came through back in January. More information was provided to us by the applicant. We are recommending approval of this with the condition, to clarify, with the condition that the uses that are specifically indicated by the applicant on the site plan in your appendix C, as well as correspondence from the applicant on 84/2025 indicating how the proposed uses on said site plan tie into the uses. And the uses for the, for a point of record with the board here, or the commission, as indicated on the site plan, include construction and debris demolition, recycling, waste transfer. That would be classified under, or under the, excuse me, the hazardous manufacturing, hazardous material storage use. The solidification area would also qualify under that use, as well as the sawdust storage on the property. Some components of the solidification process would qualify as well under junkyard in case there is outdoor storage of the facility for the purpose of sorting some of the stuff that is brought through for the process. So that is my point of clarification with all of you is that this be conditionally approved strictly to the uses that the applicant has proposed based on the correspondence that we had with them on August 4th of this, August 4th of 2025, as well as what's indicated on the site plan. And if you have any further questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shonin. Mr. Dericott, do you have any follow-up? No, thank you. Engineer Schneider.
Engineering has no comments.
Assistant Chief Gall.
No comment at this time. Fire Prevention Bureau concerns will be addressed during the construction plan review phase, if approved.
Great, thank you. Questions from the committee? Mr. Battle?
I have a question. And transporting this material, is it?
Turn your mic off.
Transporting the material, is there, how will it be transported? And the people that are doing the transporting, are they licensed to do that?
Yes, sir. So everything will be transported on semi-trailers or box trucks, or, you know, whatever trailer configuration would be required for that size load. And yes, all employees would be licensed to handle and process this material.
Director Pionowski?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Shonin. The end of your report says it should be noted that separate approval will be required by the building department due to the change in use of the property and to ensure the changes are in conformance with Ohio Building Code. So I just was curious, either from you or Mr. Farkas, has that process started? Does that process start after this? What stage might that process be? And I have a follow-up question.
Mr. Chair, through you, and Mr. Pionowski. We have not received anything official in regards to the proposed change in use. Right now, we're in the zoning phase to see what they can do. And if granted, I do believe the architect would move to the next phase of submittal, showing up what we're going to do. Also, working with Mr. Shonin, they are preparing to demolish some buildings on the site to make additional space, and that will also trigger a separate permit for demolition.
Very good. One other question unrelated. As Mr. Shonin indicated, we are approving certain uses on the property. Should the property owner like to change those uses after reapply and come to us? So my question is, in the event that we receive a report that they're operating outside of the approved uses, is it the building department that would investigate that and address that? Is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly, should that happen?
Mr. Chair, through you. It will be a joint process between the fire department and the building department, and also the zoning department because it could be a violation of the conditional uses granted. So depending on what's discovered, worst-case scenario, it may result in a cease and desist of the use of the site. Until we figure out what they're proposing to do, it goes through the filter process of a plan approval, and then we move forward with zoning. If it triggers another conditional use, that could also delay the process.
Very good. I just want to know in case something happens. I don't anticipate it, but if I get that phone call, I want to know who to reach out to. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the committee? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve 2025-100083. Mussey Ave LLC, 7716 Depot Road, Lisbon, Ohio. For 525 Mussey Avenue, requesting a conditional use for hazardous materials and hazardous storage as found in section 1168.02. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Pionowski. Seconded by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The next public hearing on here was saddled with the previous one. 2025-100084 Mussey Ave LLC, 7716 Depot Road. For 525 Mussey Avenue in Elyria, a request for a conditional use for junkyard is found in section 1168.02O. Is there any other further comments from the departments? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Public hearing 2025-100084 Mussey Avenue LLC, 7716 Depot Road, Lisbon, Ohio. For 525 Mussey Avenue, Elyria, Ohio. And the request for a conditional use for junkyard is found in the section 1168.02O. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Pionowski. Seconded by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Anissa. Item number eight on our agenda is planning commission cases. We have two. The first one is 2025-100086 Ram Signs, 41431 Shatten Road, Elyria, Ohio. For Carley Ceramics, 246 Broad Street in Elyria. Requesting a waiver of the design review guidelines for installation of signage. Mr. Shonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. PC case number 2025-100086. Recommendation of approval. Recommendation of approval from city staff. Per our downtown design review guidelines, plastic signs are prohibited in the downtown area. They have been previously approved by planning commission as indicated, recommended approval from city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schramm?
Dean Schramm, 41431 Shatten Road, Aliria, Ohio 44035. Standard set of channel letters. I went through the city, I think every side of the city is plastic. Is that an old Mayor Grace stipulation? I didn't remember where that plastic sign ordinance situation came from, but I'm of course requesting a variance so we can have this beautiful sign installed for this business.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schramm. Any questions from the committee? I'll entertain a motion to approve planning commission case 2025-100086 Ram Signs 41431 Shatten Road, Aliria, and a request for Carley Ceramics at 246 Broad Street, and requesting a waiver for the design review guidelines for installation of signage. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Rivera. Second by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great day.
And the next item on the agenda is planning commission case 2025-100087 Ace Lighting Service, 1260 Moore Road in Avon, Ohio, for Little Caesar's Pizza at 125 Broad Street, Aliria, requesting a waiver of design review guidelines for the installation of signage. Mr. Shonig?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. PC case number 2025-100087. Recommendation of approval of the design review waivers. This is very similar to the last case. Interior lighted plastics and inappropriate colors in this instance of orange are prohibited in, per the downtown design review guidelines. Plastic signs as well as colors that vary from the requirements have been previously approved by planning commission, recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Proponent? Please state your name and address.
Kathy Clark, 1260 Moore Road in Avon. Basically, we're just updating the existing sign, removing the logo, and of course, Little Caesar's color, corporate color is orange, so we are requesting the waiver for that, orange corporate color.
Great, thank you. Mr. Shonig, I know you're just with us this year, maybe Mr. Farkas can speak to this. These seem to be very similar cases. Maybe Mr. Craig can answer this too. Is there any way we can adjust these? They seem to come quite often. We approve them, and I realize they're, they're one-off here, one-off there, but to slow a process down or to speed a process up? Mr. Farkas?
Mr. Chair, through you. The design review standards have been implemented for quite a while. We had discussed with the adoption of the new zoning code, how that will affect the current design review, in essence, triggering a rewrite. We have been in talks about how to fix it, how to make it better, what are the rinse-repeating cases that we continue to get and how we can better align that with streamlining the process, so that is in discussion.
Great, thank you. All right. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none? Yes, sir.
Comment in the past, if it was a chain, we sort of went with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Battle. Planning commission 2025-100087 Ace Lighting Service, 1260 Moore Road, Avon, for Little Caesar's Pizza at 125 Broad Street in Aliria, requesting a waiver, design review guidelines for the installation of signage. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Battle. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, application's been approved. I see none. Item number 10, staff and commission reports have been submitted to you. There is no action by this body. At this time, unless there's questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Battle. Second by Ms. Rivera. The next meeting will be September 9th, 2025. All in favor of adjournment? Aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.